So if we can open it up to a few more people, like you said, keeping around the lake should be a big part. Clean.
Just trying to make my head make a cost for us because I don't want to pay and get rid of the stuff. And um and do we have to adjust the fees? We've always done like goodwill for the fireworks. I just don't remember how the whole report comes back from Jeff about hey, we yeah, a whole lot of extra stuff we had to get rid of and it costs us more money. So that's something that concerns me.
Yeah.
And how to regulate that. I mean, can you charge a fee for some of that? I I don't.
Would would you have longer hours then?
I don't know.
If they're still participating?
If they're only potentially thirty five more.
Yeah.
Well.
Our president Bruce and I had talked about what we expect and maybe people participate. Like I said, part of the membership is already within the city.
Right.
So we're we're thinking thirty, thirty five people maybe times, especially year one.
And the other thing that Anna, I don't want to be the only one to try to sell this, but they do, the Lake Association does also contribute gambling wise to a lot of different things in our communities. So I don't know, I just feel like giving it a try for a year and trying to work with everyone to get things cleaned up. And maybe if it's a ridiculous amount, maybe when it's done, we can, we can talk about the financial aspect of it, and maybe we're gonna have to.
Yeah, different fee schedule for those outfitters. Yeah, I, that would be. But the the biggest part is not so much the fee, is people being able to do this, right? To make things clear.
Right.
I, yeah, I would, I don't think we'd be a part taken because you raise the prices for the outside of the city.
Mm hmm. Okay.
It's just an opportunity for those people coming in.
It's hard to get them members. It's hard to get them down by the way on Saturday.
Mm hmm.
I get it, I get it. Yeah, that's right.
So, yeah, it gives people that opportunity that if they ask for stuff and the day is there of, I mean, you guys have a great participation already and it shows. Like I said, you know, and I've both been out there one time, going through the process, talking to Angela. Do it. It's a very well run program.
I'm, I'm completely fine with letting the Lake Association. Just like Laura said, try it for a year. I guess if it turns out that there's a lot, a lot more are taking, maybe look at it again next year, but I think it's great. You guys volunteer to come down there and make sure that they're members and.
Isn't there somebody in charge of this? That I need to talk to about how many volunteers we?
What, you and Patrick?
No, I mean from your organization. I could, I could handle the Lake Association.
Probably me.
Yeah. I was saying. Angela, I was gonna say her or us.
Let's get along. We have a sentence of serve for there.
That's neat.
That's right.
Oh, that's part of your help too?
Sentence of service.
Oh, they knew a lot of our thing.
Yeah.
They know a lot of our stuff.
This is, this is very fast up there.
That's weird.
Very fast.
Yeah, the more help we get, the more fast that it get on hold.
Yeah. Like I said, we can have people there that that will wait in line and and pre, pre make sure that it's Lake Association member.
Right.
Yeah. We can do whatever it takes for it.
I guess I will make a motion that we um include Lake Association members for the citywide cleanup on a one-year trial basis.
Perfect.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to allow um the Lake area, you'll say this Lake area association to participate in the cleanup day on May seventeenth. Um, are we gonna keep yours same from nine to eleven? From nine to eleven? Motion has been made in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion has been asked.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And I will be willing to help on that date too.
Oh, I will too. We didn't give back questions, so I should be able to.
I can't see if there's like, if I am, I will be there.
Blacks Resort blocking, blocking Lake Street. Blacks has approached Angela um that they would like to block off Lake Street. They do not have a date. Um, what part of Lake Street do they want to block off? It's in front of.
Near. Oh, we uh, we're gonna block off from the beach. We leave access to the beach so people could commit to turn around. We block off at the bridge. And in years past, I, I can't say enough thank you. It is a safety factor for us and for the people. We're dealing with a telehandler that you can only see out two sides of and wheels are this tall and they're back right over the top of a car if you don't know that the car is back there. And having a roadblock there is, it's a safety factor for, for our crew and for the people that want to get through. I understand that it's a hardship for the people that want to get through, but they have access to go around Highway twenty seven to get back onto Lake Street. Uh, we can't set a date because of the ice. We don't know what date we're gonna be dealing with until the ice disappears. And in the past, I have contacted Angela to let her know this is the date we're gonna be doing it. And uh, uh, so that's, that's basically it. But thank you for years past. And and I hope we can continue to do this because it's, it's a major safety factor. We're, we're dealing with uh, docks and this. It's not like a normal beach up there. It's an eight-foot drop down rocks. And to try and manipulate that stuff down the rocks without that telehandler is, it's nearly impossible. I'm surprised over the years that we haven't had people that have thought up names and broken lines.
You're gonna have some rocks to move around before you do that, right?
I guess you can, you can do all that.
I'll make the motion whenever you guys gotta do it, let Angela know.
Alright.
Motion has been made in seconded to allow Blacks Resort to block off Lake Street. Let Angela know the date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Thank you very much.
Motion is passed.
Do you want to let the other group know too? The other group that?
Yeah, yeah.
Gambling. Um, we have called someplace safe. Is she here? Um, is requesting the council to approve a one-day gambling license for June twenty first, twenty twenty five at the VFW.
So are they not operating under the VFW's licenses or why are we?
They, well, any, even like when you have um a sportsman's club and all that that have to do in a raffle, they have to still have this license and they have to send it to the state to do one.
Okay.
So it's usually a nonprofit type thing. So they are, they have a form that they fill up, but one of the requirements of the state is for them to get approval on the jurisdiction they're in to have it.
So.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to um approve the one-day gambling license for someplace safe on January twenty first, twenty twenty five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Resolution twenty five oh seven has been passed. Um, Chamber of Commerce. Um, I know that I was at the last meeting of the Chamber of Commerce and um there was something that you were going to bring up.
Yeah, so the chamber wants to work with some, with uh, that social media platform to promote Osakers. Um, as of right now, uh, we don't have a price on it exactly yet, so maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse, but just to give you a heads up to think about something. Um, we talked about doing a social media promotion. And as of right now, if it's just the chamber, we will promote our chamber members. Um, but curious if when we do that, collect that lodging tax, that is for promotion of our entire community? Just wondering if that would be an option? So instead of only promoting our chamber members as, because that's what the dues pay for, um could some of that money be used and we could promote the entire community with it? It wouldn't just have to be chamber members? Or does that get into?
Well, I did, and I actually did look up the state statute on it after EDA meeting and it's I'm gonna paraphrase what it says, but it, it did say, you know, to promote tourism in your city limits. So tourism could be broad term, what is um, they did ask if there are certain things they're thinking about. Maybe we can just run it by our attorney and make sure, but it was, you know, advertising. If you have something to visitor center, if you had you know, online advertising. So I feel like if that's what they're making is promotions or little videos, it probably wouldn't fit.
Okay.
That area would be something would have to go through the EDA because they're in charge of the lodging, lodging tax.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll get some more numbers, but I just kind of wanted to put it out of suite for that. I said I wouldn't mention it. If you've seen any of the new social media that the grocery store is doing, it would be that same person who would, and they're being, they have a lot of success with what they've been doing on their social media platforms. So um, again, when I get more concrete numbers, I guess maybe I'll bring it to EDA.
Our committee, we have um their minutes for their last meeting. We also have a resolution to look at for um uh, to uh for the council to approve the, the application to the DNR for the grant. And also WSB invoices um be paid, right?
Yes, so it's a resolution. We need approval from the council to go forward with the grant that we're applying for and then WSB these bills. The council previously had approved to do these things, but I did want to see um um, the different bills that they do have come forth and then we, of course, have the minutes from last meeting.
Do you want these as separate motions?
Yes.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash zero eight to apply for the DNR grant for Park Posade.
Okay.
I have a motion in, in seconds to approve the resolution twenty twenty five dash zero eight to approve the application for the DNR grant for Park Posade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
I have a motion also to pay WSB eleven thousand three fifty eight.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded to approve WSB bills in the amount of eleven hundred, eleven thousand three hundred fifty eight dollars. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is passed.
And also to the minutes of the February twenty.
Second.
Motion is made seconded to approve minutes of the twenty twenty five meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is passed. Planning and zoning, um we'll be hearing the public, having a public meeting uh this month um on cannabis ordinance. And um, we have their minutes to approve. There are advisor pull this as we've made enough changes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded to approve planning and zoning minutes from February twentieth, twenty twenty five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is passed. It's getting to that time of year that we have to look for lifeguards on our beach.
Is there any indication that anyone will be coming back?
Um, we have not called them. Could possibly get a couple of them back. We had, we did have some issues with some of the work that they did, so I wanted to see if somebody from the council would want to work with me myself regarding trying to deal with getting some hired individuals that work well. So.
And if no one is available to, to help, I, I certainly can.
Yeah.
Um, have we put out, did I do something that we've put something out, started looking for lifeguards?
We have it on our newsletter, but I haven't put anything out this year, like in the paper or anything or to the school yet.
Otherwise, I can sure help as best I can until the fifteenth of April. And then I'm really free.
So we will be looking into this here in the next, I'm assuming next month, living acts of.
Yes, yes, I'd like to get something out.
And what is the age again? Is it sixteen?
Um, they can work at fifteen, preferably sixteen.
Okay.
Which is your step here? We'll, we'll start a company. We'll see who's event.
Yes.
I love it. Thank you.
Sounds just fine. Um, when I did the um, we'll move on to the Sock River Water Shed. When I did appointments, I was now aware that I needed to appoint someone for the JD two um, with Sock River. Um, Al Larson had expressed an interest to me um, in December that if he could stay on that project, he would like to. Sock River contacted Angela, wondering who the new representative was gonna be. She went back to my, at my request, to see if it would be okay for Al to remain that person and they are okay with that as long as Al reports to the council. I've spoken with Al. He has no problem with that. Um, so we as a council have to decide, are you guys okay with that? Um, or do we need to appoint a liaison of from, or a representative from the council on the JD two ditch?
Does the motion of course, is it, we have always had a?
No, it wasn't the last few years. We, it was when they were redoing the JD two stuff and trying to figure it out, so and they wanted to form this committee and talk about it, so they had somebody from each group, so.
Al's the only one that's never done it, right?
Right.
I guess I would, I'm fine with it, but I would really like it made clear that he's not speaking on behalf of the council. He's, do you know what I mean? Like, I get, he, I feel like it would be better saying he's on it as at large, because I don't, I think if he's not sitting at this table, I don't think he should be representing the council, but if he's willing to do it, that's great. I just I don't want him speaking on behalf of the council.
Yep, yep, and I understand exactly what you're saying. Um, so do we want to appoint um representative from the council? If we do, I have no problem with that. Uh, but can we keep Al on as an at-large? Being he's been involved with this since inception, basically, who, I mean, he understands it's better than any of us.
Sure. Yeah, I'm not saying I want to be on it. I'm just saying.
Do you know when their meetings are?
I'm sick and sad.
You know, I, it's a good question. And yeah, so I think they set them up periodically.
I was gonna say, when I talked to Al about it, he said that evidently they just set it up when they need to.
Yeah.
So it's kind of just
Yeah.
periodic. And I didn't ask him what time of day they did it either. Um.
I remember talking to a few women during the evening. I just don't remember dates. I've been to a few JD two meetings.
And so, and like I say, I, I'd be willing to do it for you. Um, as long as I can keep Al on as an at-large. So then if I have questions,
I'm fine.
He would, he would be able to navigate it through with me.
And I was gonna say, if they're evening meetings, I can do evening meetings if you need it.
They were.
Um.
The motion to.
Well, Steph, would you be willing to?
Yeah.
Okay, so then if we would appoint, uh, we will need a motion uh, for Steph to take over that and um, Al was Larson at large.
So.
Okay. Motion is made in seconded for Steph to begin to be representative from the city council on the Sock River Water Shed uh, with Al Larson at large. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is passed.
I think it's good as busy as you are that, you know, you got, if you can't make it, then he just covers and you got.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, and obviously I'm grown up with dealing with it, so I'm fairly fluent with knowing what's going on.
Good.
Thank you. Um, our sign, welcome to Osakers. Um, as you can see, the Minnesota DRT has sent us a one-year alert notification. And.
Amber, you were out at you have done some maintenance out there.
Yeah.
I was at, I had it in my notes that, that something needs to be stabilized better.
Yeah, the post is like this. Like, if you're driving by it at such an angle that you don't really see that, but when you're out there gardening and standing there, right? It's, and it doesn't move, like I can push on it. It's not like loose. But it's definitely like if you're here, it's like this. And um, Matt went out and looked at, at it with me too and yeah, it needs to be fixed. Eventually, it's probably gonna pull the thing down. But the other side is fine. It's just the one side.
The one out by the interstate, yeah, or closer to the other side.
But like, the two sides, there's two big posts. The one big post is only leaning, the other one is still good.
This came up during the EDA and Brian, Brian volunteered to go look at it. I offered to go with him and we never, I think winter hit, so we could, I could try to bring that around. Yeah. Perfect, that's good.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Hopefully it didn't get brought in trouble.
Angela has submitted um, the resident letter that she'll be sending out at the end of this month. Um, if all of you are okay, um, I will write the um insider message. Unless you guys all want to participate like we have in past years. Um, I'm working on that. Um, and I would like to get um, that to Angela hopefully by the end of the week, so she can email it to all of you. Um, anything that you want to see added, any changes you want to make to my verbiage, um, I would appreciate any, any feedback on that.
You know, with the highlight of what we decided tonight about the working with the Lake Association, that might not be a bad thing to include. Um, in, in part of it just working well with other organizations to do citywide cleanup. Be the only thing.
Thank you. There's a lot of good information that, that the other departments have put in.
Really nice. It's very, very colorful, very attention-getting. Very nice.
Changed around a few things, but mostly the silos you can work on.
Sounds good.
Yes, it looks good. Um, I had asked Angela to put um the union contract on, on the agenda um, regarding the team building. Um, stated in the uh, union contract that um, everyone is available to team building day. Um, how much information does the council want back on that?
Probably the law.
No, I, I, I'm just curious. You know, I'm the one that has to approve the team building. So um, I have asked them to um share with me who, you know, which other employee they have done team building with. Um, but I wanted to know if you guys wanted information about what I'm approving? Because all I'm seeing are the supervisors. So the supervisors then okay team building for their underlings. So I'm just throwing out the question because if you want information that I have to share, um, I'd be more than happy to do that. But like I say, all I'm seeing is the supervisors.
Personally, I would love to see what they're up to, just in how they're engaging, what they're doing to help their departments. I think that would be very nice.
No problem, then I'll go back and um I know I've had, I do know that Angela and Lynette had a team building day. I'm not, what's, I, I didn't ask what you guys did.
We, yeah, we did a sewing project, actually.
Very fun.
Some sewing things.
And I know that Chad worked with the, the city boys um on a team building project, but I don't know what that was, so I'll have to, I'll have to get that information for you. Um, so moving forward, uh, when I see those things come through, I will bring that up um, under the um staff reports when we do.
Okay.
Um, we received a letter from the Douglas County Historical Society for a donation. Um, Angela kind of did a little bit of legwork for me and checked on that. And in reality, from what I see, I don't think that we should proceed forward because it doesn't, it has to benefit our people. So we can't spend our people's monies to help Douglas County Historical Society unless it actually works for Osakers. And I don't see that unless I talk to them some more to find out exactly what it goes to. But I don't see as hunky how it's gonna help or focus on Osakers. But if you want me to do some checking with this historical society, I certainly can go ahead and do that.
How we donate it to the FOMA's?
I, I think the idea is that we have the Heritage Center, which is like our historical thing of Osakers, so it'd be different if we handed all our stuff up there and they were taking care of it, but we haven't in the past.
Okay. Yeah, I guess if we're gonna donate monies for a historical society, I'd rather see it staying in place.
I agree. So we will not move forward with this donation. All agree. Let's make a motion. I'll make the motion. I move that the council does not do a donation to the Douglas County Historical Society.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconded for us not to proceed with donation to the Douglas County Historical Society. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Old business. I know that we will have to um do some uh, discussing here in the next couple of months about um, the snow removal ordinance.
I think it's in there, so we just kind of decide whether or for the not, right?
One of the comments last time was the seventy-two hours. Is that too long?
I was gonna say, I think that we should probably look at what we would like to amend and then from my understanding, years ago, there used to be administrative citations. Back in like two, prior to two thousand eight, I believe it was.
Yeah, they would typically give them a ticket and then they would remove the snow and they'd go in for that if they were to have not followed the rules. Yeah.
Biggest reasons why we stopped enforcing it was like these people that live on the highway are the county truck pulls or pushes a stone there.
Well, that was the discussion. I could pull back minutes from that timeframe, but there was a discussion about if they can remove it and it's highway and then you have the, there's no boulevard there. That was the big thing for the snow to come on. So should they have to remove it or do you have your city guys do part of it? But they never get down to the concrete. Looks to come by more once. So it's enough to remove the majority of it. Not a problem or still estimate to pass. And then there were some streets, I think that were missed in there that maybe weren't as close to school, but at first it was all sidewalks, all sidewalks need to have snow removal in. Either if the city decides they don't want to do it, they should really just remove the ordinance completely because it's not reliable for not forcing ordinance if somebody has to.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
The boulevard was the big thing. Al was, you know, brought the, planning and zoning, or Al said there's no boulevard for the snowball, but I lived on Lakes Street and the boulevard is big. Does that make a big difference realistically? So I, I don't, I don't, it's kind of lose-lose. I'm kind of curious how other cities handle it. Do they, do they own if it's the whole boulevard and is is it fair to charge the whole city to clear the sidewalks on the main road? I mean, I, 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 again, I don't know the right answer, but I get both sides. Um, I'll lay a point where he ended up chewing up a muffler that had gotten flipped, flipped out the road onto the sidewalk. So he was trying to do the right thing to clear him and it sounds like he does it to a couple of neighbors too. Blew out a snowball or something. But it is an ordinance. And another idea came up, do we do like odd years, do east side and north side and maybe to figure out a way that maybe only half the people have to do it half the time. I think let's just kind of pick out of the box a little bit.
I like thinking of, I mean, I, I don't know.
I think it comes from safety things. People couldn't even walk on the sidewalks. You know, Jacob was here in November saying that she, he had drove by, somebody slipped when he drove by and if she would have fell, he would have ran her over and she was walking the street because the sidewalk wasn't clean. So it's like, at what point do we say it's a safety thing? Especially around the school and these kids that are walking. But I know someone would say, well, they walk in the street. Well, it's because the sidewalk and the cleaner is not coming all the way. So they're just not gonna go down there and then zigzagging and stuff.
I'm not sure. I'm gonna leave it out. A couple of joggers, every morning I have a jogger on the street and some of the most sidewalks are clear. So I, yeah.
Well, honestly, this time of year, my kids a lot of time will walk in the road because there's ice on sidewalks. So it, it really is, you know, hard.
Right. I do think we need to take a look at this seriously and either let's enforce it and like it, it seems silly to have something in here if we really aren't going to enforce it. So you know, maybe we talk to a few other cities and see what they do, what works for them. And in the next couple of months, I think we keep it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise it will get lost. And unintentionally it will get lost and maybe we, you know, if we each try to figure out what a couple of other cities do, maybe our size and either figure out a plan or take it out. I, I agree with you there. Yeah, we need to keep safety up the forefront of it.
Yes, we'll put it back on the agenda for next month and see if we can get some more information from some nearby cities. And so if you have whatever city, free things.
I can look on my list server and ask the people who, like, you know, Albany and Avon are kind of down the interstate, close to our same size and ask. Rules that, yeah.
Different rules for boulevards or, uh, whatever.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
And I'd be more than happy to check their websites too, because I'm sure they have their ordinance on their website, just like, just like we do. So. Um, Randy and I, um, that's what I'm looking for, attended, um, elected officials training, um, put on by the, uh, League of Minnesota Cities. Um. For me, it was very educational. I'm still learning. I have a lot to learn. Um, steps and processes and everything that we do. I understand why government moves at the pace it does. So I'm still navigating through, through everything and I want to thank my council because you guys have helped me a lot just working through things. Angela has helped me. Um. I know that there was a lot on there about social media that I know Randy has brought up to, uh, Angela. And, uh, I am gonna be rewatching those. Anything else you want to add, Randy?
Um, I had a couple of problems, but now I forgot them.
Well, while, while you look at that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention too, um, I did speak to them and I did get an email back from them. The online training that Randy and I had to take prior to going, going to the convention. Um. I can share that with you guys. Um, I've gotten an email that I have not sent to Angela yet. Um, as long as you are members of the League of Minnesota Cities, you can log on and you can get that, that information.
That was one of them.
So. I will get that to Angela, or Angela, so she can get that to you guys.
So they're, they are there for all of us and anybody can call them, get access to and ask questions. I got, I forgot where I was actually.
Yeah, cause like I say, it was, it was very interesting for me. Um. Learned a little bit more about government accounting and how it all works. And now when Angela shows me something, I'm not looking at it like, uh, here in the headlights.
Well, and then they opened the meeting off, like the mayor said, she showed up because she was learning to some of our meetings. Well, we have two council members already on that committee. She can't three people without announcing that we have one. So around some things that just aha, kind of, duh, you know, but just don't think about it in this long time.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We won't do a bit of everything. So that was, that was another thing I was thinking of. And that, the social media policy. We probably shouldn't, with the history you've had of that, maybe we need to kind of dial that in and find some examples and maybe set a policy for that.
So for this, like this new cannabis opening hearing that we're gonna be having, so if you and I are there, can, okay.
Well, unless we post that.
I would post there's a.
Yes.
Especially if you're gonna be at one, I mean, that we have a couple at.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not, I mean, it just, it just looks bad because of the corn, so that kind of thing. They say even, we had this discussion about opening the park and stuff like that, you know, having all the council people there. Again, it's a social event. You're not talking about city business. That's legal, but if you're all sitting there talking, how does anybody else know you're not talking about city business? Right? So that was always off perspective. And then a complaint process, I think we have one, but maybe we don't, a kind of official, you know, documentation of the complaint process. So they gotta actually sign it. So there's some official teeth behind it. I just, we're coming in then, you kind of think so. That was another thing I was scheduling for.
Thanks.
It wasn't, it was, it's good training, so to get this though.
Yes, it was very interesting. So, um, just for council information, um, kind of going over the live streaming, like I say, Angela did a lot of investigating on that for me and, um, she did look at Zoom Pro, which would have been $15.99 a month. And then we, um, we did set up the YouTube channel, which is free to us. Camera we have, so basically the first month or the one month of Zoom Pro is $15.99 that we, we will be paying out on that. Hopefully it's going well, that it's recording and.
I did have a timeout the first time I was with 30 minutes. I'm not sure why. Um, past 30 minutes, I restarted a new one. And there are six people on, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure why that is. I gotta investigate.
As I say, as I say, glitches, we'll, we'll find out what the problems are. So, um, and then, uh, I don't know if any of you looked at the agenda on the website. We did put these cover sheets on the website also, so that any of the residents that want to look at through the agenda, if there's something on there that they really want to, um, be in person, um, they can see a little bit more information on what was discussed. Do you hear anything back from any of the people that you run into, uh, about positives, negatives? Please share them with me. If it's a negative, we will see if there's something we can do to address it.
Thanks for getting it done. We've talked about it for years.
Well, baby steps.
Yep.
Um, Levine Lakeside, Lakeview Drive. Um. Pollak gave us a presentation in February at the meeting. Um, we're looking at how do we want to proceed. Um. From my perspective, um, the road needs work. And I think that we as a council should look at getting it repaired for them. And I think we should probably get on it sooner rather than later, so that summer doesn't come until. So if, if there's, you know, any discussion that you guys want to have, but I think we should probably direct Darren to, uh,
That's what I was gonna say.
Get some estimates for us and let's get, we'll be on that project.
So by what?
First of all, first of all, taking care of the frosties.
Right.
And then, uh, maybe looking at what do they need to upgrade the crown of the road?
Mm-hmm.
Is what I thought we should direct Darren to, to be looking at.
Right. So I talked to him after our last meeting. Um, obviously gotta wait till the frost waters come out, see exactly when.
Right.
Right. Um. Told him exactly what Paul Sandy said, dig down two feet.
With material in?
Yeah, material, sand. Good class five. Um. He obviously said they're gonna try to, they're gonna have to cut some grass back on the road to make the water run. And they're, it's gonna take a lot of gravel to just haul in to crown that road. Maybe like if it truck run for two weeks straight, dump the gravel back there. So they might cut the ditches down again, just trying to get that crown back up, right? But he said that's, if that's what they want them to do, that's what they'll do. So.
Well.
How does that sound?
So I just have one question. Did we get, Angela, you were gonna talk about, if we got any feedback from residents? Um, did anyone give?
We, well.
I, I know I've talked to, to you about some different things, but did any other?
Yeah. I didn't send out any letters because that was at the next meeting. Paul was coming here and sending out letters and we're gonna get some estimates of what it was gonna cost everybody. Well, kind of hypothetical, so we didn't get that. So I didn't send out letters.
Okay.
Um, other than the ones in the room tonight, I'd only heard from one other person that was not wanting it to be done. Otherwise I have not.
Paying, you're saying?
Paying, yes. And, and Judy did come and get what I had put in the council's packet in September about, you know, public improvement procedures when you have a petition, it's at the state now where the council should accept or reject the feasibility study. And order the public, order the project or not. And that's a stage that you don't necessarily have to do that tonight, but we do need to make a decision on if the title was feasible or portion of it. Move forward with that or say we can do these things instead. And we'll look at that in the future date, but we do need to, at some point make a decision. So just want you to know that.
Is that feasibility study was so vague, right? Like.
Well, it was an estimate, but you know, they don't have, they haven't done any soil boarding, borings or location things. They're looking at the road itself. Just giving you an estimate of what they feel needs to be done. And it was, you know, the rolling and the watering sewer. Obviously they had them separated, so, just so you could see it all. Yeah.
Can I make a comment? Um. We, uh, we don't want water and sewer. That's, I mean, that's over the top. They wanted versus what we, all that I originally got. Um, you talk about rebuilding the road and redoing. Spot on. We're all over that. Thank you. Um. But I'm here to tell you, there's a drainage issue on, you know, my place, Brian's, Dan's, Rumba, you guys'. It, there's a drainage issue where the water just sits there. Now, my son worked for a company that did underground boring. You could do this without having, you could get that drainage fixed without doing a heck of a lot. I mean, you'd have to have somebody come in, the, the gopher one come in and mark all the, you know, where the lines and everything are, but they can literally go down six, eight feet and go underneath and they could run it so that you could drain it down into the sewer on either side. And take care of the water issues. I mean, it's not cheap. It's probably gonna be anywhere from $10 to $20 a foot for them to bore and run the piping through there. But it beats going in there with a backhoe and digging it all up.
Right.
That way. I mean, it's a heck of a lot cheaper doing it this way than it is doing with a backhoe.
Was that last summer or the summer before when they came up and did the, marked everything?
Some new summers are over.
Two summers, they don't, because I rode around in flags for about six weeks.
Right.
Well, they're gonna get the water in.
Well, and that, and that's what happened when they came out and located everything. They just looked at it like how are we even gonna? How, how are we gonna do anything with all these fiber optics and.
No, I mean, they're, they're everywhere. There's a lot of stuff there. I agree. I'm not, but that underground boring, like I said, they, they literally can go down at an angle and, I mean, they can start over here by the school and they could, they could come up in here. Uh, my son, they did it. He did it where they, they bored from 500 feet away and they brought it through a drain in the guy's basement. That's how accurate it can be.
Without disrupting a lot.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just an option. I'm just throwing it out there.
I mean, if we just go and rebuild the road, rebuild the road and do, don't do anything on the drainage, we're just gonna be right back, you know?
Right.
At the weather and conditions, we're gonna be right back. So. And another thing I want to bring up is, uh, I think it was the road guy, I don't know his name, that I brought up as far as those that are worried about the backup of, to get the hookup or water stuff. He said definitely not feasible to do that. So I think we should have the worry took off of the residents. That's, that's their main worry. Is, uh, if we get, if we get tarred on there, then we have to have the hookup and that's a waste of money for ours, especially those that have paid to get their, um, well, bug and the sewer hookup. And he said it was definitely not feasible for our residential area because of the small amount and you want to get your money back and that type of thing. So if we get our road work done and, and get the drainage done, so the road stays there and then down the road, get it paved. And so it's a lot less to worry about, you know? After all, well, what I'm thinking of, we live in city limits, we're paying taxes. We should have road done, you know? But as far as like today, I purposely walked around to see and just like he said, the water by the, the Marzett's and over by your area. And, uh, there was three of them, just smush, you know? So if we can just at least get that drainage taken care of and the roads properly taken care of this summer, at least we'd have that stuff done for, you know? Paying down the road would be great, but, you know, at least the drainage part.
Yeah.
What, what he says makes a lot of sense because you have to realize that if you're digging that road down two feet, there's only one access in for most of us. It's like a big.
Yeah, that's like, yeah.
There's, it's, if they're digging, we're parking at the end and walking in a mile. And that's not practical, but that boring makes a lot of sense.
And I understand what Tim's saying because where the frosties are, there's no, there's no getting around. You have to dig those up.
Yeah.
But hopefully they can dig so that they can leave, you know, where people can take turns going back and forth along the road. Cause most of those are in front of Paul's place.
Right.
That, that, um, they are the hot frosty. And even if, even if we just said that, okay, we want to tar the road, all this would have to be done anyway, for sure. All this road work could have to be done beforehand.
Right.
So.
Now, I'll, I'll, I'll call Darren again tomorrow and talk about the, the boring to fix. You know, get some.
You, you got, you want, if you want to call me, I can give you my son's number or something like that, Tim, or let him go and we'll get him to get.
Yeah.
I mean, he doesn't do that anymore, but the crew that he worked with still does.
Right.
I mean, obviously they're not doing anything until the frost goes off, but.
I'm pretty sure.
So that's the basis.
Yeah, I'll talk to you.
Yes, sounds good.
As, as a matter of record, there's five years talking about that they put out. That was late summer, 2023. August or September.
And there was one worry too by one of the residents as far as disturbing the drainage and stuff because we have the DNR and stuff on one side and the lake as far as, you know, so I did want to bring up that was a concern of one, one of the residents, but if you have the proper drainage, you know, going, because we do have kind of a ditch on one side and a way that's on the, I get projections mixed up, but it does go along, um, vessels and then passes under the road and goes in. So I mean, that's a natural drain off and away. So.
And there are little culvert something.
Yes, it's just that. I purposely looked today and walked around and the one culvert, basically, I mean, like in the country, we would just have to kind of clean the culvert itself once in a while. It's totally, well, there was, I don't know how many water could go through it anyway, but. So this is some general maintenance.
Yeah, I will call Darren again tomorrow. Thank you. Talk to him about the forum for sure.
Just don't want to be another son.
Right. Right. And that was the first thing he said. We gotta wait, right?
Exactly.
Till we know exactly where the frostboulders are. So if they're embarking on it. Start calling around.
You're gonna stay on that with Darren?
Yep, I call around. I will.
Are we good with that proceeding and then we'll continue with updates?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll update you hopefully again next month. Project, um, we have received a denial on the grant that was submitted to the Pyte project. This all kind of started before I was, um, in play here, but Angela kind of explained to me. And I don't know your feelings on the, on the project. But my first indication is that we should table the project for now. The, um, I know the probability cost that they had looked at was $866,000. And if we cannot get a grant, um, we have a lot of people that have a lot of footage that I don't know how they would ever, you know, be able to do any kind of assessment that we would be end up picking up a good share of it.
How much was this grant? I mean.
50%.
That was 50%?
Yeah.
Is it something you can apply for another grant or is there another one that will come up again?
Well, with this one, we're applying for a grant is emphasize on commercial industrial, um, business expansion. And because it involves residential, it's ineligible.
That's one of them.
That's what they're basically saying. And we said, we're gonna ask, what about half of it? Like half road? They said, oh, enough. So if it would be just in the industrial park or, you know, commercial, then it would be, we could apply it and, you know, got some money, but being what it is, we can look for other ones. This is usually what fits that kind of area. If it's something that's meant for industrial expansion.
So history on this as well, why I wanted this, we talked about is, I forget the gentleman's name that purchased the land over by the radio station with intentions of having these huge. I don't know what they called it. Not like the, the metal ones where you can like, if you're moving, you can film full of things.
Full pods?
Yeah, something like that. Well, the hard thing is, is to get there, they drag through our residential roads. So that is truly a lot of why we looked at doing this was because then it would give them somewhere from Highway 82 to drag right back into our, our industrial park versus taking Highway two or looking County Road three and running Pike Street back, eliminating the larger truck traffic that way. But yeah, I mean, if we aren't going to get a grant, it's not that makes it really tough.
How much money have we spent in WSB already?
Well, they, I have to look. I think it was like 30%. So we had to pay like $35,000 for them to get this far. And that's what they needed to apply for it.
Now, are they the ones that also applied for this grant or helped apply for this grant? Because they would probably know the best grants to apply for, for it then, wouldn't they?
Well, they're, yeah, they're the ones that went and split the park.
Even until he's here to touch base with us? Even?
Well, Eric and him are gonna come because of the other stuff we're required to do with, uh, I and I stuff, which is the other Main Street area project. And they're creating some of these I and I issues and the boring or the videotaping of the lines and all that. So they're gonna come back once we have that. I can tell them to touch base on this at the time. So I'm hoping that will be here next month.
I think that would be great because then they can also kind of give us another avenue with this is something that is not feasible for us or if it is something that we can if there's another avenue for us to go down. Motion to table it.
Motion has been made to second table, uh, the Pyte project, um, till next meeting. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side. Was review for Todd in Douglas County, um, is rapidly approaching. That will be on April 8th?
I believe it is.
I think it is. I have.
What, Tuesday?
Really don't have my calendar. Calendar with me.
Tuesday, August 8th. And then they did include in their, at least others coming, the assessment process and evaluations and how they come to their changes and profit events. So you can review that. Usually she goes through it at the meeting, but it's good information to have and review.
So nine and 10:30.
Yep, and I know that you are trained correct. Um, I will be here and did you say you could be here?
I don't know. I don't know where I'm gonna be yet. So I think that'll work, but maybe I'll look.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody else can make. Or Tim, if you see that you'd be available on the 8th, could you let us know and then Randy goes ahead and say, yeah, we're.
Right. Yeah, I'll do that. Even if it's Monday night or something. So what was the date?
April 8th.
23rd.
Okay. I don't see anything more on the agenda. If there's anything else that anyone wants to bring up?
Darren said Christmas lights are coming down, Christmas decorations are coming down.
What? It's not Christmas?
We're lost. It wasn't a lift thing. Nobody had, their lifts are, they're all for that community. Everybody calm down. The decorations are coming down.
Perfect. Good. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn to adjourn meeting. All papers say aye. Oppose side, opposed side. Meeting is adjourned.